And we'll call the October meeting of the Amory City Council to order and have the roll call.
Parks.
Here.
And Summeran.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Blaircom.
Eric.
Elkin.
Here.
Manor.
Here.
Platinum.
Here.
And now I've asked Michaela to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Hey, and we have a public comment.
Consent agenda.
Uh, you want to do that first?
Yeah, I I try to follow the paper. I got in trouble when I didn't.
Yeah, well, you can be in trouble anyways. There you're. Um, so we have consent agenda items minutes of the city council September sixth twenty-three. Special counsel September nineteenth committee as a whole on September twentieth, the plan commission September twenty-eight. Downtown facade committee, September eighteenth and the recycling committee, September twelfth. Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded that the consent agenda items be approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. My good, no with consent.
Yep.
Okay, now we'll have public comment.
You take the first one.
Okay.
So last meeting, when we appointed and elected our current mayor, it became known that Rick had served fifty years in public service in the city of Amory. As um, in the fire department, fire chief, ambulance service, city council, various other things, and now mayor, which I'm not sure that's the top of the list, but it's it's on the list. And so the city offices decided that it was time to recognize that. So if you would come over here. And I would like to congratulate you and thank you for all that time that you've spent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can't say that at times it hasn't been without travail, but uh, I'm still doing it. So I enjoy it. And I'm glad to be able to serve you folks. So um, Tommy Dusick, you're on. Bring him up. I'll let you introduce your young man.
Hello, my name's Tommy Dusick. We're hosting an exchange student, Alahan. He's from Kazakhstan. And he has a project he wants to do about. Do you want to explain it?
Yeah, so uh, I have a project job shadowing. So uh, in future, I want to be politician. So I decided to job shadowing mayor. So I want to see like how is the processes of city council is happening uh, here in Amory. So I'm looking forward. Nice to meet you all.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Chuck? Uh, you're you're down the list. Go ahead, Chuck on the list though.
No, I don't. There's some new faces on the council. You may not know me. I know some of them, but I'm Chuck Williamson. Um, been a resident of Amory my whole life. I'm a part of the Amory area historical society and uh, we're in the process of trying to raise a fund to acquire a building to establish a permanent museum for the city of Amory. And uh, we've been ongoing with this for a few months. We're in Diana, where we're about sixty thousand right now. And and is where we're sitting right now, and we've got other ones we're waiting to hear back from. So we've come to you to, oh, I'll let you look at this too. We've come to you to see if if we know it's budget time, if you would have a way to find some money in your budget to assist us in acquiring the building. If you look at the drawing of the inside of the building, we don't have to move any walls. The that was all new construction about eleven years ago inside that building. The classroom on the west end, which will be to your left as you look at that, we intend to keep that as a classroom so that teachers can bring kids from school down to visit the museum and can see a presentation and then go through the museum and see the things that we have on display. Right now, we still have everything just boxed up, sitting in the basement of the old library. Out in the west campus of the hospital building, they've been gracious enough to keep bumping us down the road to let us leave stuff there in the hopes that we get this building acquired. We have one significant grant pending, but I can't really say much about that just now. We have several other grants we will be applying for once we've actually made a down payment on the building. And then we can move forward because we officially own the building. And um, then we'll be applying to the Fred C. Anderson Foundation and some others uh, to look for funding for that. So um, I don't know if you have any questions about what you see in your drawings. The first sheet I gave you explains the goals and and objectives of the Amory Historical Society, and we're trying to preserve the area history of not just the city of Amory, but all the townships around us. We've sent the same presentation stuff to all the townships that you have here that surround Amory in hopes that they will consider putting us in their budget as well. And we have several century farms that have been significant donors to us and our our uh, process to try and obtain a building. Um, we've had businesses, Charles Anderson is an example. They're doing the the building project at our high school right now. They they are donors to help us acquire a building. So um, is there anything that you have a question about? The board of directors identified which building. They looked at several buildings and they felt like this was the best one for them to purchase. And then they recruited me to help be a fundraiser. The what used to be the downtown threads building? Or the Granham Insurance Agency, or I don't know which.
Or or or.
Or which it was before that. It that that building has a long history. Uh, but when it was down on threads, it was totally gutted and all new electric. Everything inside is new construction. Amory area. No. Amory Area Historical Society, if any of you ever got a chance to visit our downtown museum, our downstairs museum, when it was underneath the library out at the west campus of the hospital. We have some amazing things that are just sitting in boxes right now. And we've got other things that people uh, are willing to bring into the museum and and there may be things that rotate in and out. As an example, I have things, Ed and I have things that he has stored in the basement of the funeral home that have been there since the early nineteen hundreds. And uh, if you ever heard the phrase, oh, they're a ba- that they're a basket case? Well, I was before modern stretchers and we have the original wicker basket that the funeral home owned it when someone passed away at home, you brought that wicker basket to their home. The body was placed in that and then brought to the funeral home. We have that wicker basket. We have a child's casket from the eighteen nineties. We have the swallow tail coats that my great great, my great grandfather wore when he worked funerals back in the turn of the century. And when the funeral man opened house for hundredth anniversary, the place was packed because people wanted to come in and see that stuff. And that stuff is all packed up, just sitting in storage. That museum would be a nice place to be able to put it out, maybe on a rotating basis so that we keep changing things up so that there's interest to be drawn. The levels of giving are noted on the on that legacy wall, and we do have some ten thousand dollar donors uh, that have stepped up to put their name on the wall and uh, have quite a few business places in town that have made significant donations to us as well. And uh, we eventually will be publishing a list of all of those donors, recognizing them and thanking them for their support. So I can answer any other questions if you have any. Or if any of the rest of you have comments to make.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
Okay. They're interested in seeing it, so. This is a work in progress.
I would like to say that this all started with uh, this building right here. Look back when I was there and we consolidated the city service into this building. And it turns out could be, I I would say a godsend that there wasn't room for us here. So now we can have our own building, a bigger building and uh, give this moving forward.
There's a lot of interest from people and and when I visited down at the telephone office, I went in there and I thought, you know, how many first grade kids at school have seen a rotary telephone? All they know is a cell phone. And the so there's things like that that can be brought in and be put on display that are celebrated. And when I think back to the people we've lost in this community over the last ten years, that our history died with them, that we can't get their stories on paper anymore. And we need to get those stories down before the next generation is starting to leave us too. So thank you for listening and thank you for your consideration.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? Uh, item number two is wastewater treatment plant location discussion. Uh, this comes from from planning commission. And uh, we had a hearing on Tuesday, Thursday, Thursday. And uh, so there was a lot of comment. We've done a little preliminary work and Jeff Mahoney. You want to uh?
Well, I understand, you know, the concerns, but the smell is going to be less than it is now. Cause right now you've got those old narration ditches. And that's, if you're getting any smell, that's where it'd be coming from. I talked to engineers. We've got two hundred thousand already stuck in engineering costs. That would be gone. You'd be quadrupling that on everything. So the citizens would be paying four times more to move the plant. And we have no land. You don't know if the D N R will even let you do it. You got to get an affluent permit before you can do anything. And right now, the way we're set up here, we're biological and our limits are so nice. Like we're one point four on our phosphorus. A lot of towns are like point oh four. And they're letting us do that because of how well the plant is and everything there. I, you look at the land. We've got plenty of land. Uh, re- reusing a lot of the equipment and stuff that's already there. So I just don't see how it's feasible to even think about it at this time. And I, yeah, any questions, feel free to ask.
Well, your opinion is contrary to what the previous manager and city superintendent uh, understanding what the plan was long, so I mean, planning would always be building itself.
So why didn't they get the land then or do anything?
Uh, the plan was supposed to be at the airport, which has access to the Apple River on the south end of it. That was, that was the plan. You know, I feel I feel like moving, I've only been here thirty-six years. But the last twenty of it, so we seem to have learned in different, I would hear, different uh, capacities and never once was it ever talked about expanding the plant.
Every plant within twenty years, the after fifteen years, you have to be talking with the D N R and how you are going to expand it. All you are going to be doing this. They've already talked, uh, I forget the gal with the red hose. The city has first rate of refusal already set up to buy her property in case they need to expand. We have plenty of land there.
Yeah, so the expansion is continuing to go to the east, which means it's getting closer to Otis. It's going to impact more and more residents on the east side of the plant than it does right now.
How was that?
The concern that I have is there is no plan. I mean, if you look at the drawing from engineers as to what they're proposing, it has like eight lines on it. There's no, there's nothing there to tell the citizens what's going to happen with that thing in the next two years or in the next twenty years. And whether the the city makes the decision to stay where the plant is now or move it in the future or now, there needs to be a plan. Who you're spending at least ten million dollars. And without a plan, having no where that.
So I don't know how this isn't a plan and that's the H of everything right here. Don't look at it.
Well, so let's, sorry, I don't know how this format works. So what was at the meeting on Thursday, an engineer was here, Eric, and he said that they hadn't done any research on the move of the pot. And looking at the state statute that the city has to comply with, it seems to me that you have to know what the expenses before you can actually expand in current location and have your zone. I don't know how much the city council has looked at the state statute with changing the zoning of the residential area there. But it seems to me there's a lot involved that you probably don't think before you just change the zoning and violate that statute.
I'll address that just briefly. The statute that you're talking about is a, that's a D N R requirement that was not in place at any of the previous uh, upgrades to the sewer plant. Um, the sewer plant has been upgraded majorly twice since I've been in town. Um, always at that site. And you're correct in saying that that the plan, but there never was a plan any more than two or three or half a dozen people saying, yeah, we should move it down there. That's never, you know, it's identified as a plan here today, but that never ever was a plan. There was never a dollar expended to uh, to look into moving that plan. Uh, the best we've got on it now is we've already spent two hundred thousand dollars and we don't have a shovel in the ground yet. This is the last figures I saw was about a seven million dollar project, not ten. But you know, the costs are exponential now and as they will be at any time, if that ever comes to pass. The other issue was that the technology today is so much different than the technology was in ninety-five, the last time it was was upgraded, that you can do a lot more with a lot less sea and land, uh, et cetera. So um, you're right, we don't have costs, but the even getting those costs down entails spending a significant amount of money. And I'm not, you know, afraid of doing due diligence on that. Um, but neither do I want to pour sand down a rat hole when it comes to, you know, money to to look at a plan that uh, at least the folks that we're talking to engineering wise are just going, you know, we don't know what's going on. So we're going to do some more um, investigation with it. But as far as doing a plan to go south to to that property, um, I don't believe that it's possible to, we can't put that sewer plant right at the end of the runway. The the FAA will not allow that. That land has, that has to be kept open as a over overflight, uh, in case somebody runs off the end of the runway down there. That's, that's, that's something we can't change. So the number of um, property owners that would be impacted by that, all of course, everyone knows, quick as you say, I'd like to go across your property, it all automatically they add zeros to the value of the property, uh, which I don't blame them, but that's just the way that it is. Um, so we'll get some preliminary costs, but as far as uh, nailing down dollar wise, um, that's unless you want to spend a million dollars to get the those figures up here, it's that's not not possible. Same as it would be if you're building a house or anything else. You can get ballpark figures, but you can't. You know, if you're going to get dollar figures. Yeah, and we aren't gonna, yeah, well, we do also. We do have a plan. We do have a plan, Mike. The plan is right there and it's with costs us two hundred thousand dollars to get a plan this close. Yep. We are at what percentage of of usage or were projected, less than half, right, of the of the available?
Our downtown project, our flows have significantly went down to stopping all the infiltration that was coming down. We've lost a hundred thousand gallons just from Main Street.
So we are, we will go ahead and and get some pricing and some estimates and so on, but they will just be estimates. You can't get uh, hard prices on most of them.
And the potential that they might have some interest in working with the city and looking at a new plan south of town. And if that was, I don't know if that's the case or not, but if that is, then you have the potential of having the cost mitigated by having another governmental entity involved in the process.
I I understand that um, Blackbrook being a rural rural uh, township has a limited number of connections that would be made to a sewer plant. Uh, the Wilson addition, you know, ten, twelve homes there, whether whatever there is there and a couple of uh, buildings south of the city limits. Which is another issue as far as getting land purchases down there. Cause all that land would then have to be annexed to the city. It's a significant issue and I'm I'm not saying we don't do due diligence. I think we should do and at least be able to compare as best we can. But if they come up and say it's going to cost twenty-eight million to build a plant down there, which is kind of with a figures that they're battering around. That's four times the amount that we've got and it's still spread out over three thousand people. So it rapidly gets to be is a good idea. Yep. Be just, there's a lot of good ideas, but they're just financially not very feasible. So.
Harvester?
Yeah.
They'll be gone too.
So what's the new building or facility? What's the purpose?
Footprint, wait, you have to get rid of those rigs. They're just, they're done. They've been in there since the fifties.
Where are they holding?
Wait, yep.
And so the new facility will hold sludge in the future.
Yes, but it'll have it in the tanks. It'll be a die cast. So what is now the clarifier will be where the sludge is stored. What is the anoxic tank will get used as to cut it in half. It'd be two different purposes there and they'll build another tank. That'll be a, I don't know, R F D or something they call it. And that will be like, it'll just do it on itself. It'll all be computerized. Everything will be set up and.
So cause we currently ship the sludge to.
And we will still do that, but we have to have at least a thirty day storage of it. In case something would happen elsewhere.
And so my, I live, that's in my backyard. I think at the um, at the meeting on Thursday, the comment was, you know, well, we purchased it knowing it was in our backyard. So what's the difference? It's getting easier. Less now, maybe less noise. I mean, but the zoning um, rezoning of the residential property is putting that kind of red flag on the property. So that in the future, it's going to label our property as we have a nuisance in our backyard, a potential smell in our backyard. Didn't have them purchased. So now there's.
I'm thinking.
That's, that's not true.
Remember making the big, we're all there.
So.
That's not true. That sewer plant's been there since nineteen sixty-three.
And I would be concerned too, that where they're going right now is sludge five hundred feet from that facility. But according to the state statutes, it says that if there's offsite sludge holding facility, that it actually needs to be a thousand. And so that means that the better that went out is not accurate. It should go to a thousand feet, which would be many more.
If you're talking about offsite, there will not be offsite sort of storage.
No, this is, the facility will hold offsite sludge or the sludge on site to be shipped offsite. So it says for offsite sludge holding facility. So according to Wisconsin statute, there's potential, I'm just saying you guys need to look into it.
I think, actually, I think you need to talk to the engineers rather than us. Because I think they're they're the ones who who specified what needed to be in place and they work with the D N R. So I'm not, I'm not equipped to argue or discuss it.
I'm not, it's, I'm not making a vote.
No. Yep.
And he was actually in the room on Thursday. And he didn't know the terms of the facility. Like I asked if it was a uh, the the open water. Um, he claimed it was a ditch, um, so it didn't fall in that five hundred foot. And when I asked about the sludge holding facility, he didn't know.
Engineers on vacation, the one that's, Jeremiah is the engineer in charge.
Yeah.
So and I, I'm just a citizen concerned that you guys don't get when I lost it, it would happen. I was in my backyard, I was just concerned that the value of that property that the judge, it's not, don't with those regulations. So and and so the concern is if the people within the five hundred radius got the letter acknowledging that this was going to happen, if a thousand radius, twice the distance needs to be altered, then there's a lot more residents in the concern.
I believe that is the one that we have a different number because it was already a a standing location. There is something with the D N R that because it's already a facility, the numbers are different. I don't remember the exact verbiage on that. Because we, that was over a year ago that we started discussing, but.
Okay, anyway, we uh, for the purposes of this discussion, we we are looking further into it and we are trying to address your concerns and we will bring numbers as close as we can or as good as we can get. Without speculation. And maybe some of the questions that you have, you can direct to the engineer because we will have meetings with him. But but this is um.
Jeremiah.
Jeremiah. But this, this isn't a hearing, so we're not taking, you know, data. It's just to inform the public that we will be discussing this and doing further investigation. The planning commission made a recommendation to look into it further. Yes. Item number two is a Jorgensen or three, I'm sorry, Jorgensen Field Acquisition Discussion. You want to address that? You are you there for that?
Oh, yeah, I can. I don't see anybody here who's an interested party. You might be, yeah. The school is interested in acquiring the Jorgensen Field property to expand their footprint, their campus to upgrade that property for um, girls' fast pitch softball, youth softball, other things like that. And not need to take over the uh, more of their their campus and upgrade it along with the other properties that they're doing right now for the other sports facilities. Um, it's um. It's a location that came about because of a tragedy and the people involved in that um came together and put a lot of work into it, a lot of money into it and a lot of um, I would say, passion into ma- making that work. But over the last few years, the the fields have been used less and less by um organized softball league and this year there was actually none. So the other people involved, Jorgensen's, Eric Wojcik, who's um sort of the director for the fund, uh also came to a meeting with Sean Dorfler and the planning commission to talk it over and there's no it it it's it's a, it's an okay solution to bring that property um into the school. If if um if it was something that we were taking off the tax rolls, we'd have to be thinking about it a lot harder, but it's it's going from non-tax to non-tax. And the other thing is, there is a foundation that's associated with it. The Jorgensen Foundation has funds in in uh in hand that are used to um improve the facility, maintain and take care of it, the city right now is maintaining, doing the mowing and and other things that need to be done out there. The field is not in terrific shape, but it could be brought back into condition without a lot of effort. So knowing that Connie Jorgensen was there and Eric Wojcik was there and they both said that they would be happy to see the fields getting used again. Um, we felt it was the right thing to do to work out, how can we do that? One of the things that we said was it shouldn't be a dollar transfer because um I don't want to disrespect the people who put time and money and and effort into that facility. But I also said, I don't want to make money off from this for the city. Is there a way that we can um offer it for sale? And then also stipulate that the 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 funds go back into the Jorgensen Foundation for improvement to the same fields that the school would be using. Um, I don't know, Patty and I talked to legal advice and tried to figure out if there's a mechanism that we could do that. One of the things we haven't determined was what's the price that we would sell it for? And also if we can legally do something like that. Um, and it's possible as long as we stipulate that it would be used for the maintenance improvement of of the the location, so I don't know if Patty has any, anything additional, can you add Patty?
I actually am looking at some of the emails of the back and forth between our city attorney and myself. And I'm just having him work on some verbiage uh for an agreement, an agreement regarding the Jorgens and Field Memorial Fund and and the St. Curry Valley Foundation. Um, we would like to get the city and the school district in line for the transfer. So I guess I'm still waiting to hear about evaluation of the property, so hopefully I can get that soon. But right now we're kind of in limbo until we can something together for all of you, so.
Yeah, so we were, we were asking for evaluation of the property and I'm also not sure that that's the total. You know what, we should be asking for it, but without that information, um I I I can't say that we should or shouldn't do it at the moment, we just need more information for that. But at least you know where we're standing on it and this is close to my heart too. These are my friends, so.
I think it is a, it is a situation for whatever the uh evaluation comes in on. Uh, the city will need to be made whole for uh the original purchases and any upgrades or things that have been done in that area to uh uh that that were costing, cost the city. This is not a donation to the school. Uh, so, uh, you know, whatever the, whatever current land values are and whatever would be left over after the city being made whole for their expenses would be what we're talking about. So.
Yeah, and it just, I'll I'll hold it one second, one other thing that um the school has stipulated is that it will remain Jorgensen Field and that there will be additional um a plaque signage, something to go with it that explains how it came to be.
That was one of my questions, the other question is, are they um going to still allow the public to use it in the off season or would it only be used by the softball team moving forward?
They're going to be improving the field on the west side. The east side would be left um pretty much as is. Um, it could be used, um it will be used for um little league, youth softball, things like that. But because it becomes part of the school, it then falls under the requirements that it, no tobacco, no alcohol.
And that was discussed and seemingly everybody agreed that was just something that had to be done, so.
Well, and I played there mostly for church league anyways, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You never drink. So it, um unfortunately, we don't have the 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 price that we would be working with, but um the rest of it's all.
And we do have, we do have a a uh evaluation going on with one of the Realtors, so.
Yeah, hopefully this can come up at committee of the whole that we could take some action if necessary, if it comes up. But now you know what it is.
Everything, I think you covered everything, Eric.
Thank you. He was in my Sunday school class.
I think that's close, like a friend of Eric played basketball in the year, but I only get started what you brought up.
Yeah.
There's some kind of, you know, thirty years from now, everybody's gone, it doesn't disappear. Um, and that's like, you know, when you join, it's like church softball, that was, I mean, obviously it happened to, you know, kind of is here.
Yeah.
But uh that is just, the public can still have, you know, there's no public feel if that goes away other than the just school district, so that's my only concern. And I know, you know, the comment was made at the meeting on Thursday, where's all the softball players playing in the room? The family, they're that way. And I'll just say, I went home and looked at the newspaper and that was in that newspaper on Wednesday, the Thursday evening, so we're probably trying to get maybe to go to you there.
Yeah, but we we had, we had actually come, had this discussion um at least a month before with Eric and he was trying to get the word out, but I don't think it was, there just wasn't enough. Um, and I appreciate, I I played softball with Andy and and David, I lost a good friend. I, our our church team never won the, never won the sportsmanship award either.
All right, so that's moving forward, uh I guess I would expect probably the November meeting, we'll be able to uh make a a uh decision on uh and we'll be able to locate any costs that we added uh also, so. Item number four is the City of Amory Housing Development Policy. You got that in your packet?
Now, this is just a rough draft, I just threw it together just on uh something that you folks wanted to see. Um, it's kind of in flux, we can look at it and I don't expect anybody to do any approvals tonight, but I would like you to take a look at it and see what you think.
Anybody have any questions about the, about the policy that Patty?
And this came about because we we said that from time to time when we work with a developer and we kind of negotiate what it is we will be willing to support and it's, it's always a, it's always an effort every time we do that.
Yeah.
And we're looking for something that gives us a a consistent way of communicating to developers before anything starts to say, here's, here's what our our position is. So it's, it's open for changes, but at least we're starting with something. But I don't have anything at this time.
Okay.
Thank you, Patty.
You're welcome.
Item number five is RFP for auditing services, Patty or Ben?
So I just realized, by the way, that I didn't give you the RFP responses, just picked the place, anyway. We got two back, we got one from Kerber Rose out of Wausau and then we had one from Lauterbach and Amen, which is new in Wisconsin, but they're out of Green Bay, they're actually from Illinois. Um, they're gonna offer both the same services, but Lauterbach and Amen is eleven thousand dollars cheaper. And we actually met with them, Taylor and I did, Patty had, she was there and then her internet booted her out. But we were really impressed and we'd really like to go with Lauterbach and Amen. And it's a three-year contract, the first year I believe is thirty-five thousand, then it's thirty-seven, then it's thirty-nine. And that includes auditing all the TIDS, uh utilities, general fund, that helps us with uh Form C, basically all the services we're getting now, but cheaper.
Cheaper. How does that compare?
Are they faster?
I didn't hear you say it.
Does that compare with our price currently?
Uh, it's cheaper.
It is even less.
Is it, is it faster?
Yes.
Yes.
Pay more money for faster, wouldn't we?
Both proposals actually guaranteed we'd have our audit by the end of May.
So, okay. Uh, I think it's crippling at this point for what we've had.
Yes.
So I I, and I think maybe a firm that's new in the state is gonna be looking to have a good impact.
They don't have anybody on this side of the state, so they were, they would really like to get us.
Resident CPA, well, we am.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm actually familiar with Kerber Rose, but uh um did they talk about having experience auditing?
Yes, yeah, that's actually what they specialize in, so Lauterbach and Amen only does nonprofits and governments, they don't do anything else.
That's, that's a plus in my.
That's kind of why we liked them too, and and they were cheaper, but yeah.
Oh, we all like that.
And faster.
And faster.
Much cheaper, are they, what are we currently currently paying?
Uh, we have spent about fifty grand this year, I think forty-eight thousand to date, so they're gonna be quite a bit.
Okay.
Who are you with before I'm just?
C L A, Clinton Larson Allen.
Yeah.
Did we get any, any uh assurance from those folks that they are, that we are actually gonna get an audit for twenty twenty-two?
Oh, yeah, oh, from C L A, you mean? We do have the draft, we got that last Thursday, I think it was. But um Jonathan's actually out until, is it the end of October, Patty?
Yeah, yeah, he just had a baby, so.
He just had a baby, so he is not in the office for a while.
So we'll be lucky if we have it by the middle, by Christmas, right?
It'll be similar.
Time to start another one.
Just right, so, uh, I think we can entertain a motion to uh approve that.
I would make that motion.
Second, motions made and seconded that we uh affirm the new.
Lauterbach and Amen.
Lauterbach and Amen. For our uh twenty twenty-three audit.
For three years.
Is there, for three years, for a three-year term, starting at thirty-five?
Yep.
Thousand, going to thirty-seven and then to thirty-nine.
Correct.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? So approved.
Thank you.
Item number six is a possible sale of city property at seven fifty Sundance Street. We had uh the fellow that's interested in buying that property in and gave us a presentation. And uh um seems to have a pretty good business plan. Has secured funding for at least the first start of his business. And indicated that if uh things go the way that he's planning, that he would have a eleven point two million dollars worth of uh equipment and building on that site within four years. And the committee, I think uh Plan Commission was favorable to that. Uh, we also uh, they would also recommend, we've had that for sale for forty thousand dollars. And because of the fact that he has to do boring and site testing and so on to get a baseline for for his building and his business. He would like to be reimbursed for that twenty thousand dollars and Plan Commission uh was affirmative on that also.
Essentially, he's already invested nineteen thousand in the permitting process, the the D N R process, all of the other site. And then there's additional, another three thousand, I think that was still to be spent. And so the the Plan Commission said that could entertain um a counter offer of twenty thousand, so then that's the recommendation from the Plan Commission.
And that's in your packet? The uh counter offer?
It'll be uh condos, what type of?
This is in the, this is in the east side, east of the uh softball field, that pa- parcel of land there that we have. And. Yeah. And it'll be manufacturing, so.
I have a couple. Um, so the road, Sundance Street, does it go to that property?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I, again, I don't drive down that road, cause it doesn't. Road is there, there is water and sewer that would go up to the property all the way to the end.
It's close, the water and sewer actually doesn't go down the road, we had Jeff look it up, it's actually on both sides, so it runs through the field by us.
And who will incur those expenses?
He will.
He said he will.
I guess I have a, I have a little bit of heartburn with asking to pay half price for environmental studies. Any piece of property that you're gonna buy, you're gonna end up incurring those expenses. I'm not opposed to discounting the price, but I, I, I don't know, I just have a hard time with it being that dollar amount. Uh, what was my other question? Oh, um, I guess I'm, I'm not in favor of uh accepting an offer that's half price because he would have had those expenses anyways regardless of where he were to purchase property.
Is that what we were initially asking forty thousand for that land?
Yes, initially, there was an offer for forty thousand and the city didn't get its stuff done in time. It expired.
Okay.
The offer expired.
So now he's coming back and he's only offering twenty thousand?
It's the counter offer.
Yeah, I don't think that's the way he put it necessarily, he said, I have incurred nineteen thousand dollars worth of expenses on that piece of ground, whether we go forward or not.
Why wouldn't he pay the remaining, I mean, if we were asking for forty, he's already spent twenty, why wouldn't he at least?
He will, he will, he will pay the twenty thousand dollars.
He's only paying twenty, what he, what, he wants to only pay twenty thousand dollars for the land.
But he will have forty thousand dollars into it when he, when he's go, so.
This nineteen thousand would that he spent, do you know what that's for?
Wetland mitigation.
Yeah, it's close to, well, if you look at that, there's a
The whole south part of the.
The whole south part is right up against wetlands there.
And that had been done back in twenty ten.
We split it?
So, um, so the wetlands had been delineated delineated at that point in time and I realize things change. Um, but again, it's like, it's like the expense that we now put into Searl's Field to determine what can be buildable on that spot. We put the money into it versus somebody that's gonna purchase the property and and we're still, still gonna ask the same amount of money for the property or not, so.
I just, in encounter to that, Sarah, that's land's been for sale for forty thousand dollars for since twenty ten and nobody is giving it a second look, basically. And nobody's given it a second look, basically. Uh, Unisource wasn't there in twenty-ten, I don't believe. Um, Ballfield probably was, but uh, but um, nobody's been knocking down the door to buy that piece of ground. And my own personal opinion was that if, I forget his first figure, was it six million dollars that he was gonna spend to start with?
Or, I thought.
Four, four million, right, pretty much right up front with his building and so on. The chance to put four million dollars on the tax roll with a reasonable expenditure of twenty thousand dollars, I thought was probably a good deal for the city.
I'm not, I'm not saying that it isn't.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. And so, I mean, is, is the intent to start building immediately? I mean, is he gonna get a shovel on the ground yet this year?
I don't think he was gonna get it.
What is the timeline? I mean,
If it had been done sooner, the chances to get it started this year were much better, but not anymore.
And I think.
Understanding is not anymore.
Yeah, I think those are details to, you know, uh, hash out with as far as the plan goes, you know. Um, if he buys it, you know, I would expect that, that, that that would be consummated fairly quickly. But you're right, I don't have a hard date to say that's when.
All I know is that he's moved here. He's moving to, back to this area from Washington State.
So. From that perspective, I don't have a problem with it.
Um, and it's.
Again, we know nothing about this. So, I mean, I'm asking questions so that they can make an educated decision as to whether I'm gonna give somebody a piece of property for half of, half of the listing price. Um, do we know, have an idea how many employees are gonna come with it? Do we know? I mean, those are the questions I wanted, I was hoping to find some answers.
He said.
He wants to have fifty employees within four years. That's his eventual plan, is that four years he wants to have fifty.
Is he manufacturing?
Right.
Ammo, ammunition.
Hmm.
Uh, a lot of the questions that we had had to do with safety, security, and um, anything that would possibly cause anybody to question why it would be next to potentially school property.
Right.
Um, you know, those kind, two things kinda came up on the same day. Um, but having to deal with um, ATF, that permitting, those governmental regulations, the other thing that we brought up was in the past, some of the biggest superfund cleanup areas were old ammunition locations. As you know, like federal, you know, trench. Um, but manufacturing processes have changed, materials have changed. I was very happy that he was there to explain himself and explain those things, because those are questions that the community should have when um, when any facility comes in, but especially when you're talking about one that's, I don't call it a red flag, it's just that, oh, ammunition.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yeah, I would say that they will end up with um, probably security that's as good as maybe the bank.
Could, could we just split the difference and say thirty thousand?
This is his offer right now.
Yeah, or counter, right, thank you.
Well, I think with the amount of people that he's gonna be bringing on, the amount of money being brought under the tax rolls, um, he's offering twenty thousand, he's already invested twenty thousand, round number. Um, I say we go for it. Rick said the property's been sitting there for years and years. No, you know, there's been no moving on it.
No tax money off from.
Right. Let's, let's move it along, let's sell it at twenty, be done with it. But my next question is, um, why would this um, company wanna build here rather than in the new industrial park?
Can I speak to some of that? I know, uh, yeah, I know he wanted to have it shovel-ready, he wanted it ready to go, and it's going to take time to clear all those trees out of there. Um, and he liked the location, he liked the, the way it was set up for manufacturing. Because that was asked. And you can't lead a horse to water to drink.
We, we tried to steer in that direction.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I say let's do it. Let's bring some tax revenue in on the property, that nothing else is happening on it. We haven't had any other offers on it, so let's move it. He's offering twenty, he's already invested twenty, let's take it.
Is this within a TIF district?
Yes, it's in TIF seven.
The, the other thing is, he's not asking for any TIF money to, to uh, do any of the buildings, so uh, this should be a one sale and done for our purposes.
Good.
Can I say one other thing too? Um, what really impressed me was the fact that he is very veteran-minded, and very um, people with disabilities. So he is planning on hiring those types of individuals, because it's very near and dear to him. So um, that's just something to think about too. His son is handicapped. Um, I think he had Down Syndrome. He was eighteen. But that's very important to him.
Is there, does there need to be a motion then?
Yes.
I would make the motion that we sell this property for twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Need a roll call? Motion's been made and seconded that we sell the property and you have the listing in your packet as to the uh, names and the, the offer to purchases in your packet. Um.
Want a roll call vote?
Yes.
Marx? Ben Summerin?
Uh, yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Elkin?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Plannam?
Okay. Motion passes.
Can I just say for the record? Every time we, like, have a discussion about selling things and buying things, the rest of us are never involved in those conversations until we're sitting here and needing to make a decision one way or another. So I thank you for having the answers to the questions, but it makes it really difficult to make a decision um, right away, if we don't know anything about it.
I think that's absolutely right.
This, this happens a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Anytime we're talking about selling something or making improvements to something, or um, offering, or, you know, builder's proposal, whatever the case may be, if we know nothing about it going into the meeting, it's really hard to make a decision on it. So I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, yeah.
I don't know the answer to that, because I know a lot of these things are done, you know, under, you, you, you know, behind closed doors, but it really makes it hard. Right, it just makes it really hard to make a decision. So I just wanted to make that point. Like I said, I wasn't, I'm not against it, I just have questions.
It came to, it's kinda the same way I felt at, at uh, um, Planning Commission. That was the first time that we'd been exposed to it at all. Um, I'd be really open to suggestions as to how we, we make that a, a uh, more drawn-out process, if you will. Um, this one didn't seem to lend itself to that very well, but uh.
One, one thought might be to, um, instead of waiting until it's something that's actionable, that the Plan Commission is actually involved in the plan.
Yeah. Well, that, that's been a pet thought of mine for a long time, is that we're not a planning commission, we're a reaction committee.
Cause I know that there were conversations between this company and city and AEDC and things like that, so it's maybe something that we should say, we need to get, let's, let's move it up the chain a little bit further, so the Planning Commission is actually involved in some of the discussion and planning. Cause that's maybe what's missing.
And I think, I think a lot of this is based on how the ordinances are written too, so we need to probably look at that. Um, a lot of this is, is ordinance-driven. So we can certainly look at our policies and how that.
You could attend another meeting.
It, well, I, I think one thing that would help us, and Patty, we can address that too, is that um, normally things are referred to Planning Commission, and I don't know if Eric referred that to the Planning Commission, but normally past practice would be that the uh, that some of, something like that would come to the council and be discussed, and then referred to planning to do a more in-depth uh, um, testifying and so on and so forth, so, so we'd have at least two months of, you know, uh, what we're finding out. But that might be the, maybe the process has gotten uh, uh, a little forgotten, and uh, and so the future things, uh, cause we're gonna get the same thing on the next item.
And that too, like I said, we will look at the ordinances closely and see if those need to be reversed or whatever, because that's what.
I think, I, it's just something that, you know, it just slips by the wayside if you don't.
Yeah, and some of those things might be sensitive if somebody's looking to purchase land, and it shouldn't be part of a public discussion either, so.
And there, there's regulations. I mean, we can take, do close sessions with things like that in regards to sale of property by the city. So, you know, perhaps that's something you need to discuss in the future. Do it that way, and then go to panel.
Most of the time, we just need to be reminded that that's, there is a right way to do it and a wrong way to do it.
Yep.
Okay, um, so that's approved, uh, rezoning application for parcels two oh one zero 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 three one dash zero zero, zero two hundred and zero one hundred. Uh, from R one, single family to R two, family duplex. Um, so that was hearing, just briefly, that land is up on uh,
Summit.
Summit Avenue. And uh, they are, the lots are big enough. Yeah, you were represented at the, at the uh, hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's close to Roger. Um.
These two lots are directly behind
campground.
The campground. If you're trying to orient yourself.
And uh, that was recommended um, also positively by.
The concerns that came up were um, possible congestion on the street. Um, anything that could bring additional traffic, um, that's a narrow street, no question. Um, also, some of the discussion was on, on-street parking. I think that these are being built with garages and and a driveway pad for parking, but um, it sounded like that's still, you know, it was a concern. If you have an extra vehicle that's out on the street, winter is a problem. Those were the, those were the concerns by those who came.
Is it any more of a concern than the existing properties? You look over the properties that are alongside of it, they're set fairly close to the front.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's just in, in addition, and multiple family.
Yeah. So, the lots are, the lots are approved for a single-family residence anyway.
Right.
So you're gonna have, you know, two houses there regardless. Uh, would be basically adding two duplexes, which makes two more housing units. Um, one of the solutions that was suggested about, about the traffic congestion, particularly in the winter, was to make the uh, street one-way in the wintertime.
Hmm.
Cause Summit is a loop street.
Right.
Yeah. Um, that wasn't received by the residents as very, very uh.
A long loop too?
It's a long loop.
But perhaps we could do something like we did down, um, before we made it a one-way down, is it called Water Street?
Mm-hmm, oh.
That it's only parking up on one side. Um, same with Harriman, you know, it's a street that narrow, that's probably something we should strongly consider.
And, and it just seems like, could, could you just make the street wider as well?
That I don't know.
Simple application of funding is, yeah. But it's a consideration, it's a very narrow street.
And it wouldn't take a lot, but, but it is narrow.
I don't know what the, what the right-ofways or anything like that are up there. That's something that would have to be explored.
The other, the other thing that was raised is that we don't have a lot of housing in Amory, and this is adding four more locations, so.
I'm surprised that's not any comment about backing up on the uh, uh, campground.
The what?
Being backed up to the campground.
Having concerns about um, being backed up to the campground, which, I mean, is what it is.
Leave the, we did hear some.
There's quite a slope there, so I don't think that that's going to be.
We did hear a couple complaints, uh, and I see we don't have a police person here tonight, but uh, about a barking dog in the campground. I don't know if you've heard that before or not, but uh.
Taylor, you said you hadn't heard anybody say anything.
Dog was coming up the whole street, carrying all the way across the park also. So, there's a little bit going on.
Okay.
Can we uh, look at a stipulation somehow, that if they build on those lots, they have to drop back a certain distance from the street?
There. Yeah, both of them are going to have walkout basements in the back.
Right, to the south.
Yeah, the south.
I think the property is wide enough. That isn't the issue, it's, it's the street, really.
Yeah, that, I think that was primarily the, the most common negative statement was additional traffic and on-street parking. And winter, and I think winter is no matter what, winter's a problem on that street. There's no place to put snow.
Could we look at to see what it would cost to have the street widened?
I would suggest that we, if we move forward on this, that we see if it's a problem. You know, instead of guessing and trying to fix something that is or isn't a problem, we don't know that.
Effects are there for a reason.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Perhaps that maybe some setbacks aren't being adhered to.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm looking at a driveway right there, that's definitely within the setback, and I mean.
Knowing that we, we, we're looking for any additional to housing, additional housing that we can.
Right.
I'd hate to discourage that.
I agree. It just would appear that some of these houses where their driveways are very short. That's why I'm wondering if we can't, if they're gonna build on these lots, can we have that, you know, have it set back further, so their driveways are long enough to have off-street parking?
I don't think we can do that.
You could amend the zoning code. Currently, it's a twenty-five-foot setback from the road.
But, but.
Might have been built before that was in place.
But it won't affect any of the people that live there already, so, and they're the ones that it will be shortest time guessing.
Right, they wouldn't, they, they couldn't be changed.
No, but the new properties, we could.
The new one will be further back, cause it's, cause of the current setback rules.
Yeah.
Okay.
It might take some diligence on the, on the part of our law enforcement to make sure that people don't exceed the on-street parking. I think that some mentioned that there were some vehicles that they didn't think moved very often, or at all. So, and those things are real.
But that's on a different lot.
Yeah.
And, no, the whole discussion is about traffic, about traffic on Summit, which.
Winter, you know, there's no parking anyway.
No.
Right.
Yeah.
No.
Well, I would make a motion to accept this, given that we really need to support housing wherever we can. Second.
Motion's made and seconded to rezone uh, part of those two parcels, uh, two oh one zero 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 three one dash zero two hundred and dash zero one hundred from R one, single family to R two, family duplex. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. Number eight, approval of Class C wine license for the VFW Post seventy-nine twenty-nine.
They're just looking to do the exact same thing Sally's doing, add a wine license onto their beer one.
Yeah, so this is just add-on to their existing.
Yeah, and they meet the requirements. You have to have a certain amount of uh, sales and food to qualify for a wine license, so.
That was my next question. What, what, what decides that?
There is one extra hoop for wine.
Okay.
Yeah. And there doesn't seem to be any. And there doesn't seem to be any. Direction as to who enforces that to check their books to see that that's done.
I think the state can check that.
Yeah, I think they can, but.
They do.
Yeah, me either. Uh, them guys carry guns up there, you know.
In our area.
I would move to approve this. Additional. Class C wine license for VFW post seven nine two nine.
Okay.
Motion's made and seconded to approve resolution oh nine dash two zero two three. Oops, I'm sorry.
Nope, next.
Wrong one up. Uh, approval of wine license for the VFW post seventy-nine twenty-nine. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. Number nine, resolution oh nine two zero two three. Designating allocation of the West Central Wisconsin BioSalads Facility Commission's revenue bonds. Jeff, you wanna give us a why that is required?
Same problem we got going, just another upgrade that has to be done at the Wisconsin BioSalads to keep everything. Going good and keep everybody happy. Just everything's, you know, that was built in ninety-five too. And they've done a bunch of it and to keep it going.
And just for. Council that may not be aware of it, all of the solids that come from our sewer plant. Are trucked to Ellsworth to, for, for their processing.
Get it down so the farmers can put it on the fields and then they haul us back the liquid to send back to our plant. And we're in it with all twenty-three other communities around here and. It's been great, cause the DNR won't let us land spread anymore, so we don't have a lot of choices. Take it there, take it somewhere else, so.
And this is just another processing facility.
Yep, exactly what it is.
So should we build ours big enough to process for other people?
That's kind of what Richmond and Hudson's looking at right now.
Mm-hmm. And River Falls is out of the consortium next year, right?
Well, maybe, it all depends how far they get. Those three big ones kind of control what happens, cause they hold a little sludge there, so they.
Bigger, bigger footprint.
Well, I mean, it might be cost-effective for one of those bigger. Cities to do it, I mean, in that they're twenty-five percent of the allocation.
Yeah.
Those two.
It's hard to get them started, it's a problem.
Yeah.
DNR doesn't, you know, they don't want them popping up.
Mm-hmm.
This is, this is similar to what we did with the hospital when they did all their work. Um, it's just kind of, we're letting, it's, we're putting the stamp of approval that we have the funding. Um, to help with this.
I'll make a motion to us, uh, approve resolution zero nine. New resolution designating allocation of the West Central Wisconsin BioSalads Facilities Commission's Revenue Box.
Alright, alright, motions made and seconded to uh. Address resolution oh nine two zero two three. Having read all of that once.
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So ordered. Number ten. Reaffirming. Resolution reaffirming support for non-motorized usage of the Stour Trail. Uh, this is just in response to all the folks we had here uh. Six weeks ago or whatever. Um, talking about the trail in twenty seventeen. The city council uh, passed a resolution affirming support for. Both the cattail and the Stour Trail. To maintain the one is a multi-use trail and the Stour Trail as a. Uh, silent sports trail. And uh, this would just be. Or is a current resolution that would affirm. The decision that was made in twenty seventeen.
This is uh, essentially an updated version of the twenty seventeen one. I just took the twenty seventeen one, updated it instead of request, it's reaffirm support, things like that, but.
Oh, I just have a clarifying question, because we don't have any power over what happens anyway, so why are. We making a resolution?
You might have fallen off the city owns the trail going past Feral Gap.
Oh.
That far.
Well, yeah, I'm just. Well, I just feel like we're stirring the pot more and I just, I have. Questions as to why we need to say anything when we don't have power over what happens.
Well, I would, I would uh, say the reason we, we'd wanna do that is, I think we've got the best of both worlds, we got the. Motorized people. Here going one way and the non-motorized going the other way. And, and we're just adding more. People that can recreate in our area, so. Do we carry a big stick?
No.
No.
We really have nothing more to uh. To uh, I mean, it doesn't necessarily affect us one way or the other. But we have both trailheads here in town, so.
So this is really nothing different than what we currently have.
It costs us nothing and it means nothing if you, if you don't believe it and don't like it, it doesn't. You know, it's a.
Right.
I, I believe when it passed in twenty seventeen, we called it a comfort resolution.
Well, then make, let's make it another comfort resolution.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motions made and seconded to uh. Pass resolution ten dash twenty twenty-three. Uh, reaffirming support for the non-motorized usage of the Stour Trail. And with the addition that is uh. Verbatim with the twenty seventeen resolution. So, continuing that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, so ordered. Number eleven, Amory Community, Amory Area Community Center discussion. You have a letter.
Yep, thank you.
Read aloud, and for those of you that don't know, I'm Jen Time and I'm the director at the Amory Community Center. Um, so with the upcoming budget discussion, I would like to ask for the twenty-five thousand dollars to meet our obligations as um, described in the lease agreement. And then um, we would like to include a request for additional funding for resurfacing and repairs to the parking lot, as there's been no record of repair work being done on it since nineteen ninety-seven when. You as a city took over the community center. And I also like to consider setting aside some money for repairs to the roof and or the duct work, as in recent years, we have had ice dam damage. That has caused leakage into the library. And game room, and we have been informed through Summit Siding that there may be other issues such as, but not limited to the duct work not being insulated. He said that the previous board or administration didn't want to spend the money at that time to take care of it when he did the repairs years ago. Um, he said that the issues um, cause that they were truly dripping with sweat inside the roof due to no insulation. Um, he suggested that we hire someone to do an energy audit, which I'm working on getting scheduled. And Jeff um, informed me when he did the repairs. In the game room that there was no vapor barrier between the insulation and the ceiling. And then, um, so given that unnoted issues above, um, knowing that they are, they will get worse over time, I feel it was very important to secure funding to get this addressed. Now. Um, much like Sarah was asking, the kind of pro proactive versus reactive at the end, and Jeff just. Gave me this estimate, um. The first number is forty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars to get the um. So, resurfacing done on the. Um, parking lot. Thank you.
Is that just supply cost?
That would be them laying it BS tear. And the blacktop is bad enough, and we were plowing it last year, it falls sunk into the blacktop.
Yeah, there's.
Didn't have any frost.
Would you, would you have to do any? Sub.
That's we dig it all.
Okay, you'd take it down far enough, you'd build it back up, okay.
Jeff, did that include going back to the back garage as well? Okay.
We don't own that whole parking lot though, do we?
No.
It's our portion.
Yeah.
Uh, but it'll still have the other half.
Okay, so this is to do just our portion of it.
Thank you. If you go past there, if you notice, there are some painted lines on the parking lot, that is what. We as community center and city own, um, and the rest is all hospital and clinic.
So would this be done this year?
Possible. No, I'm asking, this is more proactive, again, for the future and getting it in your budget for next year.
Budget, okay, perfect. Um, do you have any estimates on any of the other work that needs to be done on the building yet?
I haven't, that's what, I'm just getting that energy out of, you know, I'm, I'm asking you to consider and think about this, because I know budget time's coming, um. And I did actually, after sending the letter, um, got, um, Excel Energy will be coming out on Tuesday and they just do a very minor. Well, this is what you can do to save energy here and here, and then I'm hoping he can recommend someone that can come in and do a engineering audit for us. Um, and maybe he can look at this insulation or non-insulated duct work and say, yeah, that definitely needs to be done, and then I can get someone in to get an estimate for that. As well, so.
You had also mentioned that you're concerned about the. Uh, the elect, that electric bills.
Yeah, the electric bills are exorbitantly high for that size building, um, our heating. Is all electric, there is no LP in there. Um, and I do try to control it, it's hard because when uh, my members do come in, they're usually sitting and not very active, so in the winter time, I have to have it a little bit warmer. Uh, same with summertime, actually, but it, it's, um, it can be an exorbitant bill and maybe this heat duct thing will help. Um, and he's going to also um. Address some of those concerns with me as well, so when I get more information, I can bring that back as well, but. As of right now, this is all I have.
Something done with the furnaces here within the last few years as well? That.
Yeah, see.
We have.
They did, they did a study with the furnaces as well and.
A bunch of money into the furnaces.
Yeah, we have, and we unfortunately continue to, you know, think parts are falling apart or not working anymore, it's an older system. Um, it's, from what I understand, it was a little big for what we have, and now we have it, so we have to deal with what we have. During the summertime, when I'm there, I try to control the air conditioning. For some reason, that condensing unit we have outside runs the entire time that I have it set. To, and, and I feel like it should be more like a home condensing unit, you know, when your temperature is at the right temperature, it dies down a little bit and then. Kicks back in. But it runs the entire time that it is set for, for, so like if I set it to start at, cause my cleaning and custodian comes in at um. Say five thirty, so I have it set to kind of start by five fifteen and it runs until about three, three thirty and it's. Running that entire time, so when I'm there, I turn it off when I'm feeling like, ah, it's comfortable enough in here, and then. Most of the time I leave it off, in the summer, we've been fortunate to have some cooler summer mornings, so I've been using the outside air conditioning, but. It can still be an issue, so. Um, just so you're aware of that, and that's what's going on.
Jeff, would this be a time to look at, I don't know if this is the appropriate conversation, but to look at a gas furnace situation for them?
I think it was Country said that.
Country said put it in, but Johnson Controls controls it now. Um, I have asked about, and I've even asked different places, I can look at those estimates again if you want. Um, I've asked Bank Mechanical and they were actually probably one of the. Best estimates that came in, it was Bank and Johnson, and he did look at putting LP in. Um, and you know, and what that would look like, so I could find those estimates for you again. Um, if that is a consideration, but I'm just, maybe we just see what this energy audit brings to us. Yeah, I'm sorry, natural gas, yeah, yeah, thank you.
And how long ago was that? Bid put in or estimate and so on?
Well, on your end, I don't. How many years ago, didn't they kind of go through the whole thing here, like five years ago or four years?
I wanna say it was with council, so it had to have been within the last.
I've been there for four years and I feel like it happened within this last, well, five years now, actually, um, so I feel like it has happened within this last five years. Um.
A pretty good chunk of change they got.
It's, yeah.
It happened right after I started. So that's going on five years.
Yeah. So, I mean, and it's, it's working fine, it does need upgrades, um, it's at, it's, you know. We're probably three versions behind on the computerized side of the system, um. So. I don't know if that helps. Make everything more efficient as well, so. Roger, you had a question? Or did it get answered? Rick, okay.
Mike asked it. Thank you.
Well, I think we all are, you know, absolutely energy conscious. But um. I don't know that we would have a clean energy option for them, so uh, for an efficiency. Uh, basis, so I think we would look at a natural gas setup or something that can be converted.
Lighting go from all the old fluorescents and the LEDs or.
We already did. Uh, we did that last year.
That's the little history on that, that building has been an al, an albatross since it was constructed. I, I'm not kidding you, and I'm, you know, not being facetious, it's been a pile of junk. Uh, two years after it was built, we ended up putting forty thousand dollars into the air conditioning system. Um. It, it just, you know, the, when you say that the duct work is not insulated. It makes me wonder, you know, why wasn't that addressed twenty-five years ago when it, when it happened, it should have been. Um, every. Every couple of years, it, it's been a major. Expense for that, uh, which is why you've been on the budget for twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the last. Seven or eight years anyway. Um. You know, it just. It's just pouring sand in a rat hole. Um, so I, I don't know what the solution is, but I know putting twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars into it every five or six years is. Less than what I would consider, or more than what I would consider normal maintenance. If we do something to it. Uh, it should be done properly, um.
It needs to be transformational.
Yeah, transformational as in back to the senior center.
Yeah.
Um. And I, and of course, it's the Amory Area Community Center, only Amory pays for it, not the area. So. At one time I went. We had the uh. Director go to the townships and. You know, say, whatever, cause I know you folks keep track of where the people live that are members of the. Of the uh. Community center. Um. But it's, you know.
Well, we do have, I know there's one township that still does, it's very minimal compared to.
Five hundred dollars or.
A few thousands, I think, I'd have to.
You know, kudos to them. Um.
I just, I'm bringing it to your attention. Proactive, so that when we do have a discussion later.
That, that you can is, is probably the most important.
Yeah. I didn't want it to be, hey, I need this money, and you guys didn't know about it in advance, so.
And if you need help getting bid, just call.
Okay. I will, yeah.
And we'll, we'll be able to get the numbers then also for the repairs to the roof, so that you don't have any more internal damage.
You address that roof issue.
Roof, I, I think it was last year, just the snow and.
Well, Jeff, we have had issues in the past, I know, um, two years ago, I had someone in, we repainted and put in new doors. And he ended up repainting a stain on that same one that you fixed. Um, and I don't remember past years, I, I do remember maybe three years ago it happened or four years ago, but.
On a flat, you know, it, it's a part of the roof with no valleys.
Well, it's with it.
But no, it's leaking back away from there. So it's gotta be coming in the eve to get to there.
Or I did talk to the um, the guy from Excel Energy, he said maybe that is what's causing it from those duct work as well. Um, because it's bringing in so much or keeping and keeping all that heat in there. Um, that it is causing that, you know, when they finally stop, you know, for the day. Then it's cooling down and then it's heating back up and creating those ice dams there too. Um.
Because where it's at, especially in the little, there's no reason it should leak in there.
Right, and that's new, the one in the pool room that you came in yesterday to look at, that was new this year.
Yeah, that was there when we did the other one.
Yeah, but that's new this year, new damage this year, but it was significant enough that it needs repair. Um, so.
Have we had ice dams on that roof right along?
Yes, we've got. Tape on there, you know, the heat tape all the way around the whole building there.
Right.
Everyone had ice dams last year, it didn't matter where we were, you know, um, so that's, I, it, I'm not. Singling out as it was just the last year, you know, and that it's from that, but.
Duck stuff makes more sense to me. Ice damp, yeah, it could have happened last year, cause they were bad.
Yeah.
It happens all the time there.
Right.
No, you'll get, you'll get frost on the inside of the roof, then it rains. Yeah.
The way you get numbers when you have the audit, if you could fill us in once you have the, um, Excel Energy.
Absolutely. Um, do you want that? So I just email it to Patty and she can forward that on to all of you or how would you, okay?
One point.
That's fine. Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, twenty twenty four budget discussion. So are you prepared to discuss the budget tonight?
I'm ready. What do you, what do you got?
Ben's ready to answer questions.
I can tell you, there's two, uh, bigger changes. I know, Rick, we talked about it. Um. After I, what day was that? Anyway, we removed one officer from the police department after I was talking to Rick. We just took that salary off. They'd stay at five plus the chief, so that's on there. And then for whatever reason, my spreadsheet for wages just eliminated one of Jeff's guys. So his wages were not in there. They are in there now. Most of them are in water and sewer. They didn't actually hit the general fund for the most part. I think general fund portion went up five thousand and the rest of it was in water and sewer.
So our end result was, was the, uh. We went, actually, we, are we still going down?
We're about flat. If you go on the first page, there's, it's like the bottom. No, not the first page. It's the seventh page. I'm sorry. It's the first section on the Excel sheet. It's the all funds request. And it shows the total budget amount for everything, general government, public safety, public works, parks. Um, then you can see, I think it's one percent right now. I'm not sure if that's one percent for the levy because that does include, uh, the TID budgets and the water and sewer. When I counted out the levy was like two percent ish, like one point seven. And I'll be sending this to our new auditors tomorrow so they can look at it as well.
All right, what did you say about one point seven? Run that by me again.
General levy, the total increase that I'm, I think is right now, but if I have my math right, it's a one point seven percent. Increase in total general dollars over last year.
How much more do you have to plug in based off?
Really, I'm missing the cemetery association's budget. I've reached out to them a couple of times, but haven't gotten anything. And then the big one is the debt payments. I think I have it right, but I want to double check with the auditors because of the breakdown between all the different funds. But other than that.
Well, you're getting close.
Yeah, the biggest one that I plugged in was actually underneath capital. I plugged a dump truck in for Jeff in the five seventy capital fund. And that was, I put in a hundred and forty thousand.
To replace two thousand three.
Yeah.
And then we, would we have the, uh, community center added to that?
That doesn't actually include their parking lot budget yet. That's not in there. Their twenty five thousand is in there though.
Okay.
I think we need to put that in there for the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
And if the truck is getting stuck in there trying to blow snow, I mean, it doesn't make sense that we would leave it in that condition. But beyond that, I think we need, I mean, if there's some major. Uh, upgrades that need to be done to the heating and cooling system there. If it has to happen to make it, you know, uh, sustainable, let's do it. And get it in the budget, so.
Based off of Rick's comments. With it, I mean, we pour so much money into it every few years. It almost to me makes sense to just tear it down and start over, but I know that that's a whole.
Yeah, right.
That's a whole thing too. Because I mean, if we're spending thousands and thousands of dollars every two, three years. I mean, the cost over time is massive compared to an upfront cost, but. I don't know, that's a rabbit hole too, so.
I, I. Uh, you know, the, the, uh, uninsulated ductwork in the attic, to me that. Somebody should get sued over that. I can't imagine a, a HVAC outfit putting ductwork in an attic without insulating it. I mean, that's, that's, that's criminal, you know, behavior if you ask me. Um, and, and who knows, because that thing has been reworked so many times, that heating system and air conditioning system.
Did what?
Is at least what, three, four times in the last twenty five years? And every time it's forty grand.
And I know the one that we did, like what, what was it, four years ago when we had that study done, there was even some repairs that were done at that point in time that were substantial.
Yes. Yeah.
That was only one, maybe five years.
Well, it seems to me that, you know, part of the issue is the big dog in the room is how much money do you spend for the number of folks that are there? Um.
Would say the parking lot. Not to be, somebody's gonna fall down.
Yeah, oh, I, yeah, I'm not, I don't, we're not gonna lose a truck. Not to be, not to be, things, uh, need to be done, but, um. You know, it just gets to be, where does it end? Or it doesn't ever end, but where does it even slow down? Um.
That building probably won't.
No. Um.
Well, to Mcgillis, why does that building come to the end of its useful life? Is that something that we should consider seriously?
Both in eighty seven, well, it's not that old. I mean, it is, but it isn't.
It's, yeah.
Eighty seven doesn't seem that old.
No. No. Yeah.
But if we had questionable workmanship and materials and stuff that was put in or from the start, if we're gonna continue on to have a community center.
Mm-hmm.
Things we'd look at building a new one.
There's a lot of people, a lot of activity in that community center since I've been on their board. She has stuff going on all the time, constantly gone in there in the mornings and they have their, um. Coffee, men have their coffee. There's over a dozen men. They have their pool. There's things that are going on all the time. Every day you go in there on the leaderboard and she has like four or five different. Events going on each day.
We're also gonna, going to, uh, at some time have to address our pickleball courts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've gotten several presentations regarding upgrading. Because they're, they're, you know, they do, they do need upgrading. And pickleball is a raging success in the city of Amory.
So my, my question with that is, does the current location make sense? Or if we're going to invest a bunch of money, should we be moving them like to North Park or something?
North Park is pretty much off limits because it is used just about every square inch at some time during, you know, times during the year. So. Adding something to North Park is really has to have some real thought. Full consideration as to what, what it would be added. Um, I, you know, the thing is the folks are happy there. They like the location. That's not an issue.
It's low traffic.
Yeah.
Not a bad spot, but if it does, you can't just peel the surface and redo it. It's, you'll have to do the same thing that you're talking about for the parking lot. It's gotta be.
So the, so the best, the best guesstimates so far have come out and some of them have had estimates, uh. Uh, the city has the wherewithal to put, to take the blacktop up. Dig it down two feet, which has been Jeff's estimate and put, uh, that the crushed aggregate that we have out of the landfill. To fill that up to make a good solid base, which has been the problem for thirty years that that thing has been there. Is that they fix it up, put a nice blacktop over it, paint new lines on it, and in three years it's, it's, you know. Well, it's, it's not washboardy, but it, it, the ground moves, so it needs to have a good base put under it. Um, the last estimate we had for blacktop was sixty eight thousand, I believe. Um, and that include that, so that would be the city crew taking the blacktop off, taking the fences, not taking the outside fences off.
Picking. Two, three sides of it off, leaving the one end. So we'd have to pull the on fence, otherwise they can't get in.
Get in there, yeah.
Yeah, so that, all that work can be, that can be accomplished, uh, in-house. So the sixty eight thousand for blacktop is, you know, that's one part of the cost. Uh, did you talk to Monarch? About possibly splitting the.
No, okay.
Um, if we were gonna do something with those, uh, the, uh. We have a little bit of a landfall or a, a landfall this year in that we have, uh, we'll have. A fair batch of money left over in the police budget that we can, you know, because we've had, not had a chief for six months. And we've been short one and two patrol people for, uh, a similar amount of time. So the possibilities of putting thirty thousand dollars into that. Asphalt budget for this year and the next thirty out of next year's budget. Or twenty twenty four was the budget we're considering now, I think is a real possibility. Um. They say, uh, that they, the pickleball folks said that they can get two more courts in that. If it's laid, when it's laid out properly with new cement and new markings, which I think would be, uh, you know, it's a twenty five percent. They got eight now. Six.
Six.
Six, so it would, it would increase the, uh, capacity by twenty five percent. Um, which is something that, you know, I think is pretty well needed down there. Um, when we talk about usage of city facilities. Uh, I don't think there's a, a thing in the city that is supplied that gets any more usage than the pickleball courts do. They are just literally morning to night, uh, six days a week, sometimes more. And it fits all ages, um.
Exactly.
You know, so I, I think it's something that we really need to seriously consider doing. Um, and we could.
What is, what is the next step then, Rick, to move that forward? I agree. I agree. It's something that, and Saint Cray Falls is building a brand new one up there.
And the, it's been brought up that maybe, maybe there should be a dues thing or a, uh. A fee for a, a membership fee for using it. The ones in Saint Cray are for, for money. That, that guy's putting, I don't know how many pickleball courts in and you aren't gonna play for free on them. That's a private entity, so I think there's some ways, you know, you're not gonna get a, a great amount of money back out of it. I don't mean that, but, uh.
Maintenance. For some maintenance cost.
Yeah. The painting, the painting and striping is quite expensive. I think they were talking about eighty thousand dollars for painting and striping. And that, I believe what they do, they paint all the blacktop, so this part is not, it's not a green line. It's, uh, yeah, it's like, uh, yeah. And I don't know if there are options to that or not, um, but, uh, at least one of the pickleball. Uh, players that is interested in it said he thought maybe they could generate some money out of their group. Uh, to help defray some of that expense. Uh, that might be pie in the sky. I don't know, but, uh, um. So I think that's one, one addition that we need to do.
I agree.
Well, it's come up for a couple of years now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and it's now getting to the point where it's hard to, hard for him to play on it because of the cracks and, and I think.
That's character.
Yeah, I think that's been, yeah, character. Yeah. That could be, keeps you alert anyway. Um. So. Any other places we can cut any money out of the, out of the budget to save a little bit?
Not likely.
No, but what about when you were, we were talking about it like this, if there's other things that we could bring forward? When we knew that we didn't, weren't going to be spending the full police department budget for this year. How hard is that to do? And can you, can you assign the money like that to a fund that you set aside for doing that next year? It's hard to do.
It is hard to do. What you could do is budget amendment a certain amount to it, but we'd have to spend it. We couldn't just save it. So if they'd accepted deposit, that's what we could do. Otherwise. Essentially, you don't do anything and it goes into fund balance and then you overspend the next year.
But if we spend.
You prepay the monarch.
Yep, cause I've spent, we've spent too much and had to take some out of next year's budget.
Yeah.
Paid too much too.
Yeah, but I, I, you know, if we, if we have an idea what it's gonna be for that. This would be a place to do it and not have to put it in the budget. And, and spend down what some of the reserves are.
The twenty twenties, we should, we should be, and we don't know because we don't have the audit back, but we should add money left over in the twenty twenty two budget. Also. Because.
Whoa, so I know.
Because Tom, Tom retired in.
Recent, yeah.
I'm retired in first of September, so we have four months of fire chief or police chief wages, fire chief too.
Yeah, we'll get money. Um. Forty grand, I'll take a new range.
We have four month, four months plus we weren't at full staff, uh, all the time there either, so. So, but we won't know that, what we carry over, uh. So whenever.
Just audit.
But the twenty three budget, twenty three budget, we will have money. We know that we're gonna have, uh, some of that. And the twenty four budget, now you said that came out at, uh, nine hundred, what, twenty seven?
For the police?
Yes.
I know, true.
Nine oh two.
I'm gonna go back to that one for a minute too. I'm not sure it's. It's wise to take that one position out before we have a police chief. And have some way to deal with what the costs really should be, because I don't, I don't wanna go into it telling the police chief, here's, here's what you have to work with. I think we need to work at, how do we reduce costs?
I think you have to tell the police chief, this is what you have to work with. We cannot, I don't believe afford seven officers. So the proposal is just to go to six plus the chief. Um, but the, the budget. For the last, for people that say to go to full strength like it was a year and a half ago is for nine hundred and eighty seven thousand. That's what it was.
That was for six officers and a chief, nine eighty. This, now it's nine oh nine. That's for five officers and a chief.
So I, I'm, I'm not saying we, we need to go back to five, but I am saying we can't afford seven and a chief. It's just, we, we have, uh. We have, uh, are in negotiations. We know we'll have, uh, well, we're ninety five percent sure we'll have a new officer starting. Uh. Should be before the first of the year. Uh, every, we're just waiting on the results of his, uh, of his, uh. Background check. So that will have, we know what those costs are gonna be.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And we're getting closer on a police chief candidate, um. That'll probably be presented two weeks from tonight when we have a committee as a whole. Uh. If things come out the way we, they're supposed to, we'll have that discussion then, so. Um, but, you know, it's just, like I said, being sensitive to a thirty three percent sewer increase. And, uh, we're not due to, when do we get reassessed again? Two more years?
Twenty twenty seven.
Twenty twenty seven, so for three more years. Um. So. That's where we're at.
This is small potatoes compared to a lot of the other stuff, but there's a, uh, twenty seventeen. Uh, vehicle that needs an eleven thousand dollar repair for the police department. Is that some?
Too late.
It's gone?
No, no, the, the work had already started. I think they probably have the car back.
At the invoice today.
Yeah. With, with a new motor.
Okay.
Twelve thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, you know, could we have gotten by with it? Yeah, probably. We not gotten by with the motor. I don't mean that. But I think it, it beggars a serious discussion when we have time for a new squad, because that seems to be a. Gimme at sixty thousand miles on those, that Dodge, you put a new crankshaft in.
Yeah.
There's gotta be a different alternative if every department in the country is running into those same issues. There's gotta be a different alternative if every department in the country is running into those same issues.
Okay.
I don't know what that is, I'm not.
Right, but I was in favor of spending the eleven or twelve thousand dollars to, to keep that vehicle and fix it rather than trying to.
And that brings it under warranty too.
Yes.
Yeah, now we'll, now we'll have a three-year warranty on that motor, the new motor, but. You know, it, it just pains you to spend twelve thousand dollars on something that's worth fifteen thousand dollars even when you get it. You know, when you get it fixed, so.
But when it's fixed, it's a useful vehicle for a period of time, three-year warranty, et cetera.
Yeah.
We did have an idea on that truck too, um, Jeff is due for a new work truck. The idea we had was once that's fixed, because the new squad should be up in service. Whenever they get the dash cam, because they can't get parts, the idea we had was to remove the seventeen squad. And give it to the sewer plant, so we don't have to buy a new sewer truck. And they could run the Dodge for five years, kinda like the, uh, was it like a ninety seven?
Ninety five.
Fire department truck he's got now, that's basically what we wanted to do with a police truck.
Don't you have another fire department truck?
Yeah. You guys buy me another one. We got the van too, we've got something with that thing.
Yeah.
They got one of our old tenders too, they can drive that around.
So if we're gonna do something with the pickleball courts. Where would we proceed? I mean, we can tell Jeff to tear them out tomorrow morning, but.
Well, we won't know how much money will be under until like. Early December, we'll have a probably a better idea, so we could do a budget amendment then. But we won't have an actual close figure till then.
We should do the groundwork before then, don't, don't you think?
Gonna kick them off their courts.
Well.
Well, we need to have a plan for them.
Yeah.
You'd have a better chance of getting them off the courts if you tell them it's so that you can build new ones next spring.
According to be. To Bob Rasmussen, he said, do you just save the time and we'll be off? Yeah.
Also, it's hard, and they can still play, but it'll just be dirt. Probably get us on play.
Is there any, any sort of recreational grants out there that might be?
There are, um, I know Taylor looked into the Governor Knowles one. But you have to have a comprehensive outdoor recreation plan to even apply, which we do not have. So that, that's kind of the big one that we could have applied for to get funding specifically for pickleball courts, but we'd have to create a pretty large plan first. But otherwise, I mean, from private companies, there, there could be, I don't really know, to be honest.
Maybe we should task the pickleball people to investigate those things.
There you go.
There's pretty. Heavy amount of expertise and that kinda thing on, that play pickleball.
Mm-hmm.
Good idea.
I'm with you, Rick.
We'll go to them and say, here it is, we'll do it, find some money. Um. So I don't know if there's any, anything, any way, or any decision that needs to be made, um. Consensus, or I don't know, do we need a motion to go forward with that?
If we do, I'll make that motion. That we put that in the budget to. To finance it, if we can get monies from, somebody in the pickleball. Association, if that's what you call it, that's all the better, but even if we don't get that, I think we have to move forward with providing that.
Why don't, why don't we, yeah, I, I, I'm just thinking, because. We've had several meetings with Bob Rasmussen, who is kinda spearheading the, the thing up now.
President of the Pickleball Committee then, right?
I think so.
I mean, I, I feel like there should maybe be a plan, and you know, considering the fact that there's communities around here that are building these things for. Charge, perhaps, um, it's a situation where, that we need to look at, um. Very similar to the softball fields that have. Reservations, and if you belong into that group, you pay this, and there's gonna be open times, and there's gonna be closed, closed times, and that type of thing that. You know, maybe now's the time, if we're gonna be putting, making this investment.
Yeah.
I think the president should maybe work on that.
Oh, give Rasmus something to work on, you know.
So I mean, there's gotta be, you know, I mean, it, it, obviously, this is part of Rex, Parks and Rex. Yeah, right?
Yes.
So maybe there should, maybe we could ask for a subcommittee to form, to maybe help with this. Cause, I mean, it, this is a constant conversation, and you know, I think it's, let's do it, get it done.
Yeah, one of my neighbors loves it, and he said it, it works great the way it is, I mean, the courts are always full. Everybody just waits for their turn, then get onto any one of the courts that has an opening. Um. He said it's awesome, the way it's working right now, but he said it does need to have better surfaces, so.
Yeah.
And if we're going to do it. Let's do it right so that we don't have a parking lot situation.
Well, and the situation that could, you know, somebody said, well, how long are they gonna last for, I said, well, you know, I don't know. Uh, softball isn't too popular right now, uh, at least men's softball.
Right.
Girl, yeah.
The duration of the courts would be a lot better than parking lot, I mean, you know, vehicles on.
Who knows, twenty years from now, maybe they will, maybe uh, clamoring for more softball fields than pickleball, maybe pass a, you know.
Yeah.
So. Um, alright, so we should do that, we're not in a hurry to do that, it doesn't, I mean, if Jeff gets to go ahead. Uh, we should be good to do that in November, easy enough, I would think. If we don't have snow, you know.
Always an if.
Put one all switched over.
Yeah.
I would think by November, they'll be pretty much done with. Pickleball anyway, or I, I can't imagine that's something to play through the winter, is it?
I think the attachment that, uh, you sent us.
They do go and they have.
It's, oh sure.
Said that they play pickleball from, it's in April to October. And then during the winter months, they play once a week. At the school.
Inside, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's. Good, alright.
Thinking about joining, playing pickleball, just reading that.
So if we make sure that we get that on the uh, agenda in, in uh. Two weeks.
Yep, I already have it written down, because Bob called me to make sure he'd be on.
Right. We'll have, uh, we'll have. Maybe have Rasmus and come up with a plan, his plan by then, so. Okay, um. Lost my agenda here.
Yeah.
There we go, closed session. Uh, per Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five parent one parent C, police chief position, considering employment promotion, compensation. Or performance evaluation data of any public employee or employee over which the governmental body. As jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Uh, motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Close session.
Motion's made and seconded to go into closed session, roll call.
Marx.
Yes.
Dan Summer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Dan Blaircon.
Yes.
Elkin.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Latam.
We're in closed session.